Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding to receive the word for the Mayor of Tamworth.
All right, good evening everyone. Thank you all for joining us in tonight's council meeting. Before we commence the formal meeting, I would normally ask the Reverend Alan Gordon to say a few words of guidance for us. He hasn't arrived today. So I would say that may whoever you believe in guide us tonight and help us to make good decisions that will benefit Tamworth and the people within. Thank you. Right, please be seated. I'll go with the announcement that we've got. Before we commence the formal meeting this evening, I am pleased to say that we have received a request to film tonight's meeting. Whilst we accept that the council encourages transparency in our decision-making, we must also ensure that we have advised all those present and also ensure we have made all the reasonable adjustments where appropriate. We must balance the need for openness with the need to protect the privacy rights of any members of the public who are attending tonight's meeting. As this is the first request for the meeting to be filmed, I would like to draw your attention to the council's notice for filming, recording, which can be found attached on the inside and outside of chambers. There are also copies at the back of the room or available in democratic services. I would also like to address some concerns that have been raised around members of the public being filmed. The protocol requires that no members of the public are deliberately filmed. The area set aside, which in this instance is the front row on the side of the room to my right, or rather to my left, thank you Ryan. Should allow any filming to be carried out without risk of any accidental filming of the public. However, if any members of the public are still concerned, then I would ask that they take into account where the filming will be taken from and seat themselves accordingly, which looking as I believe that's the case. Thank you all for your attention. Now we will start the formal meeting. First of all, are there any apologies for absence? Yes, councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I have an apology from councillor Murray, by the way?
Thank you. Are there any others? No? Okay, we'll move on. To receive the minutes of the previous meeting, pages three to 24. Yeah, to receive the minutes of the previous two meetings held on the 6th of June and the 7th of July.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. Firstly, is it possible to remove my jacket? I'm absolutely melting.
Yes, sorry. Any members wishing to remove the jackets.
And on that note, I'm happy to remove both sets of necks. Thank you.
Sorry, can I just mention now? The minutes that you've got in front of you, one section's been amended slightly to conclude the question. That was from the meeting held on the 6th of June. Those minutes weren't approved last time and kind of missed off the version that was on the agenda. You should all in front of you have a piece of paper with a copy of the question. That is literally word for word the amendment that's been made in adding to the minutes. And I've got copies of both of them in front of me. And if it is your wish, I would ask that the amended version with that question added in is included. The bottom of that page also includes a copy of the wording for the question that was asked on the 17th of July and not included. And it is intention that those will be included in the minutes of tonight's meeting. Because the minutes should reflect what actually occurred at the time. And so for those ones that were missed off, it's sort of like one meeting behind, but it's just a clarification as to why that's the case.
Councillor Bill Cliff.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can I just say on the previous meeting where I left the chamber, councillor, the minutes do not record my objections regarding the exclusion of the press and public. I would like these to be included.
Thank you, councillor O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I'm a little confused. I refer to the written response from councillor Pritchard, which I understand is to be included in the minutes. And in particular, I refer you to the first sentence which says, "A list including monies for maintenance of open spaces was provided." Shouldn't that list be in the minutes so that the other members of the council know what the list was that was provided?
Again, just clarification, that list will be included within the minutes. But it's just considered a bit too big to include as an addition, but it will be supplemented to the minutes so it's available for reference.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm a little confused as to having been already allowed advice to my feet as to why I didn't get back at that point. I had taken the lead and I think correctly to have moved the version that Mr Keater had laid before us in addition to the formal ones as described. And I was happy to second those reserving the right. Though I'm not sure either of us would be able to say what ought to be done, would you like to, councillor Bill Cliff's request? But I formally seconded and reserved them.
Thank you, councillor.
If I could just draw councillor's attention to page 13 of the minutes, minus thirty-five. I'll just read it quickly. It says, "Councillor Art Billcliff has stood against the motion of exclusion of the press and public and stated that if the gender writing was held in private, he would take no further part in the meeting." And then after resolved, it then says councillor Art Billcliff left the council chamber. I believe that satisfies the query, but I'd be happy to...
Councillor Bill Cliff. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I don't believe it does satisfy it. There were reasons why I left this chamber. Them reasons were not relayed in the minutes, therefore it is not an accurate recording of those of what happened in this chamber. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Billcliff. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. While I am sympathetic to councillor Billcliff's plight here, minutes are there to be called at the decisions of the council, not the actions of every individual councillor. That is the point of minutes. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Those for the acceptance of the minutes.
Mr Mayor, while we're on the minutes, we can take the vote, but I did reserve the right to speak. Would ask you therefore if I can take it now. This is simply, Mr Mayor, in the council minutes it recorded that I asked a question, one on behalf of councillor Sandin who was ill and unable to attend the meeting. And councillor Danny Cook kindly actually gave us a verbal response, which he didn't have to do on the night. I and all the other councillors, I believe, have been notified that the applicant has begun to resubmit their application for 1,500 homes to North Warwick. And I would be grateful if the leader would circulate a statement for us as to what his meetings have been since that last run. They're referred to in the minutes. I wouldn't expect him necessarily to verbally update it now, but if he could agree to send us out that, because I think before we go to North Warwick, we would be well equipped if we knew what had been going on in these meetings. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor People. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I am more than happy to facilitate the request of councillor People. I did promise this council a briefing on what's going on around our borders. The problem is the picture keeps shifting almost by day. I think at some point in the next week someone will export something out to all members, a rough statement on the position of where this council is. But it has been difficult as the position keeps shifting. Thank you. But we'll be done.
That's satisfying.
No, no, I'm sorry. What's the complaint in the first place?
Okay, so back to the votes for the acceptance. Those for... Those against? That's carried. Right, any declarations of interest? No? Okay, thank you. Item five on the agenda, matters referred to the council in accordance with the overview and scrutiny procedure rules. So we are receiving recommendations from the Chair of Corporate Scrutiny Committee on the reports on prayers to full council. Councillor O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. As members will recall, the special meeting of this council on the 12th of September last year, it was resolved that Mr Christopher Cook had the title of honorary alderman of the borough conferred on him. Unfortunately, due to illness, he was unable to attend that meeting. And again, he is unable to attend tonight. However, I've had a message passed to him that he would like his son to collect the certificate on his behalf. And I would ask you, Mr Mayor, if you'd present it to councillor Christian Cook.
Thank you. With the greatest pleasure. Christian, would you like to walk in here? Right.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Wish father all the very best and all, and thanks from the chamber.
Thank you very much.
All right, cheers.
Um... So I'm receiving this award. I'll actually just... I'll give the body on... On behalf of... So that's all. There is half and half. But me, so I'm gonna... Well, happy retirement. Thank you.
Right, continuing with announcements. Are there any other announcements? Councillor Cook?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to take this opportunity to announce that I will be appointing a champion to work under the cabinet member councillor Steve Plamore in his portfolio, Heritage and Growth. I will be appointing councillor Ben Price as a town centre champion to support councillor Plamore in works around to improve our town centre. Our town centre continues to deserve our dedication and improvements where possible. And another set of eyes on this can do nothing more but help. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Do you have any more announcements? Right, item five on the agenda, matters referred to the council in accordance with the overview and scrutiny procedure rules. So we are receiving recommendations from the Chair of Corporate Scrutiny Committee on the reports on prayers to full council. Councillor O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. You'll have the report in front of you, if I may very briefly introduce it. As you rightly say, I'm stood here as the Chair of the Corporate Scrutiny Committee. And the reason this is before you this evening, to give you a bit of history, is during the last cycle of corporate scrutiny, we had a working group which was looking at the role of the mayor particularly around civic duties, including civic funerals and whatever. Now during that piece of work, we had a number of conversations about the appropriateness of the parish chaplain providing the prayers at full council. Now, we haven't concluded that piece of work and we received in this very chamber some training on equality and diversity. And it was during that training session that it was questioned whether we were inclusive in terms of the prayers at the start of the full council meeting. As a result, Mr Mayor, this became a work item for the scrutiny committee. A working group was formed of mixed political and religious views and we met on one evening and thrashed out what you have before you, Mr Mayor. The essence of the recommendation is to be as inclusive as possible as society becomes more secularised and more sectarian. Basically, it's about people having choice rather than just doing what they've always done because they are told to. So as a result, Mr Mayor, we have the motion in front of us, or the recommendations in front of us, which I would like to move on block. And that is, in light of modern times, prayers should be held before the mayor opens the formal pass of the meeting. A signal be given to the mayor to enter the chamber for a moment of reflection. Also attend another room, we suggested committee room two just because the access to the chamber within, trying to be practical, for prayers at five to six and then the full council meeting at 6pm. And when the meeting is in order, the mayor is informed by the deputy to make their entrance in the traditional way. Just to elaborate on that, tonight, we all did really well and we were all in place at six o'clock. It doesn't happen very often, nine times out of ten, one of us is somewhere else in the room chatting to another councillor. So that was the thoughts behind that one. And then the mayor opens the meeting in the normal way and offers a possible thought of the day style comment just to remind members of why we're here and the seriousness of the issues that we discuss. So I will move those on block, Mr Mayor. I will caveat that, and this comes out of a discussion we've had very recently. And that is, in here, we haven't put a timeline as to when that happens. So I would suggest, Mr Mayor, that I've moved those recommendations and we can pick up the implementation of at a later time, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, councillors. Councillor?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. On behalf of the scrutiny committee working group, I formally second the proposal and reserve the rights.
Thank you, councillor People. Any questions? We move to debate then. Councillor Sherry, people.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm very pleased to see this item on the agenda. I'm a member of a family which is a bit half and half. I've got half the family who are very committed Christians and half the family who aren't. I spend a lot of my time working with religious organisations in a charitable way. And so I recognise very strongly the need for prayer and the reason why prayer is important to some people. But I also recognise very strongly our responsibilities and duties under the Equality Act, not just to be inclusive, but to promote equality and diversity. And I would not want us to be a council where anybody was sitting here feeling excluded because they were being included in prayers which weren't relevant or important to them. So I think that this is an ideal halfway house, giving people who wish to pray the option and giving people who don't wish to pray also the option. So I very strongly support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor People. Councillor Sandin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Most people here know that I'm a practicing Catholic. I generally wear my faith on my sleeve. In fact, a lot of people will know, but I actually came very close to becoming a priest. If I hadn't met my wife when I did, I'd probably wear an adult collar today. My faith is very important to me, of course, that I am. Before the start of council meetings, I've found it helpful to have a moment of reflection and communion with God and to remember why we're here. My Christian faith is the reason I joined the Labour Party nearly 35 years ago, as a means of trying to live out my faith in society in which I live. Prayer isn't as natural to me as breathing. So it was pleasant surprise to me to find that when I joined the council for the first time in 1990s that we started with a prayer. However, I do not think that anyone has the right to impose their beliefs on another. Better set an example, hopefully a good one. Prayer of council is now with expression of belief. But the more important part of that is the inward communication. Regardless of what decisions are made at council, I will be praying at the start of the meeting, whether that's simply to God in my head or whether I'm intercommuning with a bunch of like-minded councillors and members of the public. What prayer should never be is a meaningless custom. Customs can often be good, but they only really come alive when you understand the meaning behind them. Prayers at council and any potential change that should be made to them shouldn't have an adverse impact on the morality, I think. So it shouldn't change how we function things like Mayor Sunday. With the possible exception of where you have a mayor who has an active faith of their own, perhaps we should seriously consider whether that ceremony is at their normal place of worship, but not potentially to the exclusion of St Edith's. Essentially, we can look at having two services, so we retain the custom as well as spread the practice more evenly. I can remember for a council Marian Councilman, when she was mayor, had her mass at the end of her mayoral term in St John's, almost next door to where we are now. Remember somebody almost having a prayer out of a... I've been an old server for many, many decades. I'm currently the head old servant at St Har's. And the then heads-up-to-service of St John's spotted me coming in, you see him, go, "Thank God", grabbed me out of the crowd with my son, and I ended up serving the mass during the thoroughble. Had the mass for Marian and that mayoral year. I'm not sure I agree with Jeremy's comments regarding sectarianism. I'd actually say it's probably less of an issue today than any time in many, many years. But I do agree with his comments on being inclusive, so I will be supporting his proposals. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Sandin.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm, again, I'm quite, I still quite like the fact that we have collective worship. I feel that tradition should prevail here. We are a Christian country and we should carry on with just a small prayer. I still believe that it has a place in this council and the chamber. As regularly as I do, I listen to what Reverend Gordon says. And it is just simple words of how to treat each other and to remember why we're in this chamber. And that's to represent each other and not go for power and glory. I'm concerned as well that if we do lose the prayers in going on with this, what will happen next? Will we start, as Pat said, to lose mayoral Sundays and other church-related services that we do attend at St Edith's? Doesn't matter what church it is, but as a tradition, that's where I think is, this is all tradition-based now. That if we lose this, what else could we lose in this town now?
Thank you, councillor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm a Christian, as I believe that the majority of councillors here today are. I believe that the prayers should still be held here in the chamber as they have done for over 180 years. We are a Christian nation and a nation which has been built on Christian values. I see no reason why we cannot hold prayers here in the council chamber five minutes before the main meeting whilst anyone of a different persuasion or an atheist be allowed to wait or pray in another anti-building. When the Christian prayers are finished, maybe a bell could be rung indicating that fact, so everyone else who objects to the Christian prayers can then enter the council chamber. The mayor could then open the meeting and make the thought of the day. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Billcliff. Councillor Rhodes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm Anglican Christian and all lots of things the way they are. Nobody's forcing other people to pray. I'm just asking that they stand in respect of the thing that's going on. I was mayor Tamworth some years ago and at the same time the Lord Mayor of Stoke-on-Trent was a Muslim. And he came here, went into church, been to the cathedral in Lichfield. And I asked him, "How does he feel doing that?" He said, "It's all right." He said, "When I'm in those buildings, I pray to my God." He said to me, "If you come to our mosque, you can pray to your God. We're not going to object to that." Or if you want to be standing in silence, you can. And that's all I look at this. We're not forcing anybody to do anything. Just have a few minutes' silence if you want to. This, I agree, councillor Billcliff, is the proper room for it. We don't want to go into an anti-room. And I think it'd be wrong to split us up, all the non-believers in there and the believers there. Let's all be together, let's respect each other's wishes. We're a Christian country. We swear allegiance to the Queen. The Queen is the head of the Church of England. Coincidentally, the more the Conservatives, the Church of England is said to be the Conservatives at prayer. So, you know, I should be voting against your recommendation.
Thank you, councillor Rhodes. Councillor Fox.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor. Pass over the obvious comment from councillor Rhodes about the church thing being conservative party clear. If that was ever true, it certainly is no longer true, and I'm glad to say it. I think that a moment of reflection of the sort that Alan Gordon has given us over the last year is quite important because when we actually get down to our debates, we'll talk about budgets, we'll talk about individual policy, what he concentrates on are the principles that should guide all of our actions. And realistically, that should be quite inclusive. Now, I recognise that we do a particular issue... Now, I recognise that we do have particular issues inasmuch as a present arrangement. We're more likely to wish everybody to participate regardless. I would prefer, five minutes prior to our opening meeting, to have, uh, the statement in here rather than in an ante room, um, others may join at six o'clock. Also, I think it would be appropriate, rather than simply, uh, having the minister from the Church of England to perhaps be on it. I, I'm, I'm sure that what, uh, Councilor Jeremy Oates said about being a more sectarian country, uh, what he really meant to say was a less sectarian country. And I'm glad to say that is the case because having been brought up in, uh, Glasgow where football teams very much supported individual religions and usually battles after, that was a very sectarian divide, one that I'm glad to say is much diminished. Uh, and that seems to be the trend throughout the country. So, yes, I mean, I think we should have it, but I think we perhaps need to do it a bit differently. Perhaps have ministers, for example, from Methodist Church, perhaps humanist, uh, Roman Catholic, Christian Presbyterian, if you can find this. Uh, but to reflect not just through the council members, but also the communities which we live and represent. So I think there's still a role for this, but it mustn't be something that we are perhaps expected to participate in, but that should be as inclusive as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Bill. I'm sorry, Councilor Faulkner, so, uh, Councilor People there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you. In standing here, I'm very conscious. I mean, I draw, uh, my faith, and I doubt I'm anything like as good as Councilor Stannan. But I draw my faith, uh, from Catholicism, um, and in fact, from a Northern Irish background. So references to sectarianism, I think we did trip over there, Jeremy. Uh, but I've been at Parkhead in the Celtic End. Um, and yes, it was an interesting environment to be. If you wanted to share, um, sophisticated opinions, you had to wait till afterwards. Uh, but from a simple point of view, the reason I supported this motion is that when we discussed this at, um, the working group, it had arisen, as Councilor Rhodes said, from a training session. One of the things that all councillors are asked in Labour Party interviews for big councils, I would be very surprised if there isn't something parallel there for Conservative councillors, um, is what would you do to promote equality if elected? So I'm mindful of that. I've asked hundreds of people over the last three years, what would you do if you were faced with an equality issue? So on this occasion, I'm standing up and being counted. I might be counted on the down or the up, who knows? We've all got a free vote apparently, which is great. So what I would say is this. If you, under the Equality Act, require everybody to be here for six o'clock and then pray, that is breaching the Equality Act. That was the advice training provided. That was clear and ambiguous point. I take on board the suggestion, because it was actually kicked around the working group, that it should be, if you like, the people who want to pray here beforehand and, and other people joining. That was a tech, in a, in a way, a technicality. We could agree on that tonight. We could agree that we ought to do something and then look at the facts. But that was what we were advised and that was what we thought about. But one of the comments coming back, and I won't name the individual councillors because they were representative, was as non-believers in any particular faith at all, they felt unrepresented and compelled, which are the two things under the Act we should not be doing. So that is why this proposal came to council. We need to consider the rights of all. Now, if you go to the Old Town Hall, you'll see the Borough Charter. We've heard a lot about tradition. We have the town hall, we make them there, and we do all of those things. And everybody who's guided round will be shown that chart. But at the time that charter was given, myself, Councilor Stannan, I'll say that because he's already declared he's a Roman Catholic church. There are other people here who are members of a church other than the Anglican Church. Not one of us could have taken part because we were all legally debarred from being councillors. Until eighteen twenty-nine, we were still debarred. Other dissenters were admitted at different stages, Jews in eighteen fifty-nine. Those are the traditions we have got rid of because we wanted to be an inclusive society. Nobody now would say that which church you go to should determine whether you can sit here or not. We've had a small introduction from Ukip to the fact that it's tradition. Well, I haven't seen Ukip councillors at any of the key civic events. Back to Britain Sunday, probably a bit awkward, because if you want to emphasize your Britishness, you're forgetting about the Polish pilots, the Indian pilots, the Canadian pilots that saved us in nineteen forty. It's a bit of a shame, isn't it? That on Armistice Day, our tradition is the Bishop of London leads the cenotaph service. Now they do put all the others there as well. The first person to win the VC posthumously in World War One was a young Catholic officer of twenty, Lieutenant Dees, defending the bridge at Mons, along with Private Godwin. He wasn't a Catholic, so he's not relevant to this particular position. But you can see what I'm saying. If we taught people about the thousands of names on the Indian memorial at Luton, we wouldn't be talking about Britishness in that defined, narrow way. They were Hindus, they were Muslims. In my next book, I've got a lovely picture of a Muslim soldier who died for France. And I'm looking forward to that coming out in France because it's a massive pointer to people like Le Pen as to a reminder of the kind of people that preserved French freedom. Not all of them were Catholic peasants. Many were, but many weren't. And this is about recognising, we've reached the point where whether we pray in here of any denomination or none that they want to pray, or in there, doesn't really matter. That's, that's a technicality. But legally, we should not be like Staffordshire County Council, who not only say the Lord's Prayer and expect the Muslim councillors to say it too, but only use the Anglican version, which any Baptist will tell you is one of the few things the Catholics got right because we used it out of the Bible. All right? Now, you know, I was, I went to school to a Catholic, to a non-Catholic grammar school. I had the right to be stood, taken out of lessons. I had my own Bible. Boy, was it hard work because one was thicker than the ones the other lads had thought to carry. But, you know, we, we worked together because there was a recognition of the right to withdraw. Nowadays, the Equality Act makes it clear, we cannot compel people. And all that this motion about is about bringing Tamworth Borough Council practice within the realm of the advice we received from the trainer who was asked to give us equality training. It's not a blow to tradition. It's not a blow to something that you should hold on to. Because actually, I stood there, like many others in my grammar school. I prayed, but a lot of the boys around me weren't praying. They were just bored waiting for the end of assembly. Some of them were Catholics, some of them were Protestant, some of them were whatever. So all I'm saying to you tonight is recognise that we have a duty to facilitate all. Those of faith, any faith, and those of none. And all this is designed to do, by whatever means we adopt, is to recognise the equality of all. And we as a council have a duty to do that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor People. Um, Councilor James.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll keep a brief. It's not broke, so I'll fix it. I actually support Councilor Faulkner saying that all faiths should lead prayers. But I'll also include the Jewish faith as well, which obviously was missed off for some reason. I'm not a practicing Christian. I know there's people in here that aren't Christians. And I've actually had a conversation in the past with members who are not Christians, and they've said it's a time for reflection. It's not necessarily listening to prayer. But as I've said, it's not broke, so I'll fix it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor James. Councilor Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, without wanting to repeat everything that's been said already, um, I'm not being overly religious, as most people will know. Um, I think if some members of this chamber actually went away and looked at the word 'respect', these, uh, these meetings would actually run far smoother than they already do. Respect for me, for each other is a massive issue. And, um, I feel at times within this chamber, it lacks within certain members. Um, I also believe that a choice should be given going forward. Um, we are in the twenty-first century. And I do like tradition, but I don't like things being forced on me either. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilor Lewis. Councilor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. When I came into this chamber tonight, um, I was kind of leaning towards tradition, maintaining the status quo. I think that's probably the best speech you've given in this chamber so far.
Thank you.
It's all right, no problem. John, you're absolutely spot on. I actually think that we're missing an opportunity here. We had the opportunity to maintain tradition, but also grasp an opportunity. At this moment in time, there's no Sikhs, there's no Muslims on this council. There will be eventually, and this gives us an opportunity. I've actually read, uh, the Bible, New Testament and the Quran, so. And I'm, for me, I've grown up in a secular community as far as I'm concerned. It's not particularly a mono faith. So I think we should actually encourage this. By adopting, uh, the suggestion that John put forward, where we move the actual prayer sessions outside of council, there's an opportunity not just to have your own faith represented, but others. And when the time comes that more religions are present on the council, there's an opportunity for individuals to meet those people from those faiths and understand them. And it's what you call it, peace comes through cooperation, and this gives us a very good opportunity to maintain tradition where we recognise that there's a God. And Mick, I will point out that Catholics, uh, Sevi, Jews, Muslims, all worship the same God, just in different manners. But there's an opportunity there, and I think if we pass that by, we'll miss it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Doyle. Councilor Coe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to be honest, Mr. Mayor. I've agonised about this speech all day. I wasn't sure if I should make it or not. I'm choosing to make it. First of all, Mr. Mayor, I echo Councilor James, and the only thing I will echo. It is technically a moment of reflection, we describe it as. It's just historically mayors have chosen to have prayers. That being is what it is. I'll be honest, Mr. Mayor, I'm envious of some of the people in this room, those with faith, but I have not. I'll say that publicly, I have not. And I'm envious because of the comfort and the hope that must bring. I am envious of it. But I don't have it, and I don't see me getting it anytime soon. When I was first elected in two thousand and four as a twenty-eight-year-old whipping snapper, I spoke, I spoke to the then leader of the council, councillor Non-Cup, and said, I'm uncomfortable praying in full council. Ron told me, if you're uncomfortable with the prayer, stand where the mayor stands. And I've done that for fourteen years. Have I been happy doing that? I've not been unhappy. Not been happy. It's always to me been the way it is. What this piece of work from Scrutiny has opened the question of, do we need to do it? It's given people a choice. I've historically watched people who probably have no faith give a reading in St. Edith's when they become mayor because they believe that is what you must do. All of a sudden, we're opening the question here in this chamber, in a very mature debate, I feel, about should we do that or not? I will draw attention, please, Mr. Mayor, to the next item on our agenda. I'll read you a few lines from the hate campaign from Handersley International. We are proud to live in a diverse and tolerant society. Another line. We will not follow hate, we will not allow hate to become acceptable. We will work to ensure that local bodies and programmes have the support and resource they need to fight and prevent racism, xenophobia. We reassure all people living in this area that they are valued members of our community. Whilst this does not directly mention religious belief, I believe the aim is clear. Again, we are a diverse and tolerant society. We are a free country. Our beliefs are our own. And if people want to pray, let them pray. If people don't want to pray, they shouldn't have to. I will absolutely nail my colours to the mass. If somebody wants to pray, I will crash through the walls for your right to do so in any way you want to. I will fight for that freedom, as I'm sure everybody else in this chamber would. We represent, as I say, a wide and diverse community. There are many beliefs, faiths and denominations. And again, I will fight to my last breath to protect every one of these. But again, I, do I carry the same faith as others? No, I don't think I carry the same faith as anybody in this chamber, as I carry none whatsoever. I ask this, if I'm prepared to go fight for those rights, for people to pray if they believe, who fights for mine not to? Who gives me that opportunity when I am prepared to fight for others' rights? We say tradition. I'm prepared to fight for that tradition, but in a different way. I will get to that, Mr. Mayor. But why should any member of this chamber, employee of the entity, resident of town, be told, this is the way the world is and you will follow? When, when majorities tell minorities that's the way the world is, history doesn't usually come down on their side. This cannot be right. I cannot be told I have to pray. This cannot be right in our twenty-first century society. This is the bit I've been very concerned about today, Mr. Mayor, and I suspect in days to come I will regret this. I wonder how many councillors are aware of the landmark ruling of the High Court on the tenth of February two thousand and twelve, led by the Secular Society on behalf of Mr. Clive Bone, who wished for prayers to stop at Bedford Council in Devon. The council held prayers in meetings and refused to adjust how it was done. The legal challenge was a judicial review, and the High Court ruled that prayers should form no part of a council meeting in England and Wales. Let me read you the judgment. A local authority has no powers under section one-one-one of the Local Government Act nineteen seventy-two or otherwise to hold prayers as part of a formal local authority meeting or to summon councillors to which a meeting at which prayers are on the agenda are being said. The saying of prayers before a meeting is lawful as long as councillors are not summoned. The Local Government Act, dealing with the organisation, management and decision-making of local councils, should be interpreted as permitting the religious views of one group of councillors. However, sincere or at large in number, should not exclude or even modest extent to impose burdens on or even mark out those who do not share those views and do not wish to participate in the expression of them. They are equally elected as councillors with their opinions. Therefore, my colleagues in this chamber across all sides, I say this. A few of us would like to exercise our legal right not to participate. I've been one, and I have a few who've spoken to me earlier, such as Councilor Price and such as Councilor Ford. We now wish to exercise our right not to participate. However, that said, going back to my earlier point, I have no wish to remove prayers from this council. Those who wish to, wish to do so deserve the right. I could ask why we don't do this at Cabinet. I'll do it at Planning, but that's a different matter. Many of us who not share the faith, many of you carry, and I'm trying not to do because of them. We have stood in prayers historically, attended Mayor's Sunday, done readings, as I've said. We were expected to. We didn't know there was a choice. We now do. Now we have an opportunity. Now we have an option. Do we get the right to exercise our belief, or are we to be told to acquit ourselves as others tell us, to believe as others tell us? I will still attend Mayor's Sundays out of respect for the mayor, but I won't pray. I will still go to Remembrance Sunday out of respect for our fallen and echo Councilor People's excellent words there. Mr. Mayor, I suspect this motion may carry or it may fail. But I think I may think a way that we could keep some of our tradition and allow those to exercise their right under the Act, under that High Court ruling. I would suggest, Mr. Mayor, the, uh, motion is slightly amended to say on a full council night, the mayor welcomes councillors in the chamber at eighteen hundred. Thus, those that want to pray or take part can. Mr Barrett, as chief executive, sends out the official summons for the council meeting to actually start at ten past six, when the other members can then be seated to continue in. Therefore, our tradition stands that at the start of full council, those that wish to pray can pray. Those that wish to actually wait outside, or if they wish to fetch in a different denomination priest, like a father, and go to a weaker facility. This brings the middle ground that keeps everybody, I think, what they want. It keeps our tradition of prayers at six o'clock if you wish to partake. Also, if you wish not to, you don't have to. The constitution states when the council meeting ends. At no point does it state when a council meeting starts. Therefore, Mr Barrett, I believe, would be very comfortable sending the summons out for ten past six to allow those that want to keep our tradition. And in some ways, it is a beautiful tradition to keep it and allow those of us, like myself and like a few others, that do not wish to participate, but respect those that want to, to continue. I therefore ask for that amendment, Mr Mayor. Hold for a second. Thank you.
We now arrive at debates on the amendments. Councillor Cook. And then councillor Gresorys.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um. So I'm on this uh working uh one group. And um. When all of us were. Discussing it. Um. All of us. Were on the couple. And we also uh. Respect each other's uh. Views on this as well. Um. I actually supported um Jeremy's uh recommendations. Um but on the actual uh. Kind of working uh credit groups, sort of a tie off, someone. Still understood that having um prayers in a separate area um could also uh cause issues with uh. So. Tradition, et cetera. Um. What um councillor uh Cook has actually certainly phases. The speech and that. I actually reckon his, well idea is a uh happy uh com- well, I was actually uh too told of us if we um have a. Double E for not.
Thank you councillor Cook. Uh councillor Gresorys.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh Mr Mayor, I too have agonised about this matter. I wasn't intending to speak, but I've listened patiently to the debate. Um members may recall that I've expressed this view in council before, that I hate making policy on the hoof. And I was content to continue listening to the debate uh until my leader proposed an amendment in respect of which I'd no noticed whatsoever. And I urge members not to vote for the amendment for this reason. And I say immediately that I too am a non-Christian. I too uh respect other people's views in the sense that it is important for them to be able to express their faiths or their beliefs through their religion. And for my part, in various places, I've acquiesced in respecting those persons' views by doing what other members have suggested that they do from time to time, which is when the mayor stands, I stand. Uh when somebody prays, I stand. I don't pray myself. I go to church. If I'm satisfied, if somebody wants me to read a lesson, that I can do so in the sense that it is not making what I regard to be an overt religious point, then I will certainly read the lesson. Mr Mayor, it's clear to me from the debate that with respect, this matter deserves not for us to make policy on the hoof. It deserves for it to have serious consideration before it comes back to the council. What I am concerned about is that various speakers have said that we are in uh denial, if that's the correct expression, it probably isn't, of the Equality Act. And that is news to me. I expect to be advised about the law so far as this council is concerned through the proper channel, which is through the solicitor. I don't expect to be told what the law is at a training session. By the way, I was unable to attend the training session. So it really just surprised me that we are in breach of the statute. If that's so, I would respectfully suggest, Mr Mayor, two colleagues, vote against this amendment when the substantive motion comes to be before you, vote against that to maintain the status quo for the moment, to allow the much bigger picture to be looked at across all the implications of what we are attempting to do this evening, so that in due course, we can make a considered view. So it's for that reason, Mr Mayor, uh and and obviously I can't support my leader. He knows full well that that I am averse to making policy on the hoof. And I urge other members to consider the implications. If you vote for this amendment, it would suggest to me that you're likely to vote for the substantive motion. And I urge you to vote against both of them to enable the matters that are raised by this report to be properly considered and for a formal report to be brought back so that we can make a decision without making policy on the hoof. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Gresorys. Uh councillor Stanley.
Thank you, Chair. Just to start off, I'll speak on the amendment. Um I would encourage members to support councillor Cook's amendment. Um I find it strange, we've got, there seems to be a lot of uh an agreement between those of faith and those who don't have a faith on, we shouldn't be forcing people who don't have faith to do prayers. I mean, uh as I said earlier, I'm a a devout Catholic. Um faith that's imposed on someone isn't a faith. If if you're forcing someone to do something they shouldn't do, and I don't think anybody in the twenty first century should be doing that. Um if we're in breach of the Equality Act, we should, you know, at the first opportunity, resolve that. So I think we we need to actually do something this evening, not put it off to some time in the future. You know, as a council, we can change at any point if we want to, how we function. So if we decide, you know, it's not working out as well as we'd like, or there's there's a few changes we'd like to make, we can do that anytime we want to, or as a as a group of thirty councillors in town with. Um so I so I will be supporting the amendment if councillor People have actually um secondly, I was a fraction of a second behind, actually doing it for them. Uh so I would actually uh mention that. You you could see looking at councillor Cook, um how he was struggling to talk on it. So I think to have done that, I mean, it is courageous of him. I'm I'm thanking for doing that. And I must be, the the one issue I potentially had with the um first motion was, I felt we should be using this room. And so I'm I'm happy to accept that. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Stanley. Councillor Silver, people.
Speaking to the amendment, uh Mr Mayor, the reason why I accepted it on behalf of myself and councillor Oaks who proposed our is that I actually think that this was one of the options that was effectively booted around in the meeting. And in the end, the meeting said, well, we'll propose this and we'll see what happens. But actually, it comes very close to where the middle ground of that meeting would have warped. I'd also offer councillor Cook an answer to the question, who will fight for his right not to pray? Well, I think he's found out it's actually a whole number of us, including those who have at times um had a very rough time um over being a member of a faith. So uh I think what we, what I would say, and councillor Gresorys always speaks from the heart and he always speaks very articulately. What I would say is, this is not hoof making for those of us who were in those meetings. The Biddford Devon result was actually mentioned some time ago um and caused us to have a debate, I believe, here um roughly the same time when the Equality Act went through, to retain prayers. But I think it's been established tonight, very clearly, that in the hearts of the members of this council is not the desire to compel anyone to participate. If the mechanism is not to go into a separate room, but to have a ten past six start with a six o'clock to pray start, then I think we're all, uh maybe, probably not all. Uh maybe not all are happy, but the the majority would see it as a reasonable approach, treating each other with the respect that they deserve and which I think all of us have been signed up to doing in one way or another. It is not about attacking anything. It's about defending. We've said for a while, and we said in our meeting, that there should be a more diverse range of people come to our meetings. I know many applicants for whom this establishment would be a relief because constantly being pinned with the state is not actually always helpful. But very importantly, this is about human rights. The Equality Act said that everyone should be treated equally. And when we ask people, and I know councillor Cook, he's a protective Tory councillor, we ask them about the Equality Act and we expect them to know that it protects all faiths and none. And that's the critical way in which this amendment, and therefore the um uh motion having been, taken that amendment on board, would therefore composited together mean that we would be happy with a way forward that protects the rights of all. And I think everybody in this chamber who's listened to this debate and anybody tuning in will be surprised at just how grown up we can be. There's a tradition in the House of Commons, the councillor Chesworth gets up, I have to hurl abuse at him just because he's on the other side. We don't follow that tradition, do we, Mr Mayor? We don't, well, not all the time, that's fine. There's occasional time, but we all have fun fights, aye? But you know and I know, that's not the level that we want to be at. And I think tonight's debate has shown that sincerely, in the hearts of the vast majority of people, whether they're in favour of the motion or not, there's a desire to accord to their fellow councillors and the people they represent an equality of treatment. So I would, that's why I've supported the amendment. And I think councillor uh Oaks would agree um that that we take that amendment on board and vote on it as a composited whole. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor David. Councillor Sherry, people.
I never get the last word. But I'm all in.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Quite right, Tim. Um. I shall try to keep this brief. Um I would like to support the amendment. I think it's a pragmatic solution to an important issue. Um I'd just like to say, with the greatest of respect to councillor Gresorys, we were both lawyers in a former life. I once went for a job and did one of those psychometric tests and the H R professional at the end of it came out and he said, I can tell you're a lawyer. And I said, why is that? He said, you kept answering every question. I need more information. I need more information. And I think we do have a slight tendency to want more information. Uh but I'm actually comfortable. I think that there is an issue uh with regard to the Equality Act. I wasn't aware of the case that councillor Danny Cook kindly cited for us, but I can see the perfect logic of it. Uh so I'm I'm pretty comfortable in my own mind that um there is a legal issue. I think there's also a moral issue. Um but I I'm very happy to support the amendment because I think it's a pragmatic solution to the issues that we've got, provided it's very clear that the council meeting starts at six ten. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Gresorys. Councillor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um I was just writing the exact same amendment while Danny was speaking, so I agree fully. Definitely. I definitely agree. This is the way going forward. So everybody does feel comfortable whether they arrive here at six o'clock. And we have whichever faith preacher is here to whoever it suits. Some people may feel it's nicer to invite a different faith preacher every meeting. I'm open to all faiths. And then other people can choose to join us at six P M or at six ten. It's entirely every member's choice. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Bishop. Councillor Oaks. Uh Jeremy Oaks, sorry.
Uh thank you, Mr Mayor. I just wanted to very briefly speak on the amendment uh because I'd like to sum up on the substantive motion when we get to that stage. Um councillor People is absolutely right. We discussed this at the working group. Uh and this was, for for a large chunk of that discussion, the the preferred option. Uh I'm only sharing this just for us to bear it in mind when we do get to vote on the amendment. The issue we raised, which is why we looked at a, an alternative, was if prayers are taking place and the meeting starts at ten past eight, no, ten past six, then that effectively closes the chamber for those who don't want to take part in in prayers or still wanted to put their stuff in or, uh and it was just a a practical issue about moving people in and out of the chamber uh dur- during that ten minute session or or that that time here, whatever's given. So that was why we moved away from it. Um but but it was very much the essence of the discussion was to have the opportunity not to or to take part in in prayer. So what uh what Danny has moved is 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 captured the conversation that he wasn't part- partying up to. But it was just that that practicality, which is why we, why we've come up with a a list of recommendations. And we're really trying to cover every different opportunity. Uh so that's why we we didn't go with that one in the first place. So that's, I was just wanting to to throw that into thought, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor. Sorry, it's um councillor Michelle Thurgood.
Okay, thank you. Um just a kind of um small point, Mr Mayor, just to say that um in, on what, on twenty sixth of March twenty fifteen, the Local Government Religious Observance Act was passed by government, um which um basically meant that it may have, it uh within legislation, that all councils, including parishes, can choose to hold prayers at the start of the sessions without kind of moving away from original traditions, so to speak. So from a point of the issue with the Policies Act, that effectively supersedes that legislation to say that actually we can still hold prayers. My personal view is that it's tradition. It's something that is really important. Whether or not you believe in God or not, it is a tradition that not just in this council, happens in hundreds of councils or tens of councils across this country. And this isn't something that we can, in my opinion, just erode. We're losing enough of our traditions and our kind of views and our values. As someone who's councillor Cook will know very well, I'm spending huge amount of time at the moment planning a wedding. And it's only when you start looking at that that you realise what's important. This doesn't bother me. I'm not particularly religious. But it's when you start taking that time to actually look at what's happening in the world, you've actually realised what's important. And for that, I cannot support the motions. And also my second point is.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Sorry, excuse me councillor Thurgood. Uh I thought we were. Sorry, Mr Mayor, sorry, excuse me councillor Fergood. Uh, I thought we were debating the amendment at the moment.
That's what I was doing. I was saying I wouldn't support either amendment. And my second point is the fact that the choice of moving the meeting back to an official effective start time of ten past six, we're not moving the end time, which is councillor Fergood just said, we have to finish by half past eight. We don't have start time. So technically, by moving the meeting, we're technically on certain nights when we do sit here and we do get called to half past eight. That actually means that we are not having the opportunity to fully debate our other really important topics that actually matters to the people of this town. So either look at extending the meeting time by ten minutes, or let's actually go back to the drawing board and get a better solution. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Fergood. Um, councillor Fergood.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Um, I want you to second this amendment. Um, I got my hand up a second later than the Jack in the Box Labour leader, um, who may have jumped over in the air and and agree with it. Um, it's it's unusual for me to to agree with the leader of the council and I missed a very good opportunity there by a millisecond. Um, I sh- I agree with this amendment in principle. In essence, it was what I actually asked for when I actually spoke. Um, I agree. We shouldn't force people to do things, anything, not religion, anything. And that's not what what this council is about. Um, but I think um when we talk about um we're going to have a Muslim in this council, we are closing that off. We're closing it off. We could have a Jew in this council. We could have a Hindu in this in this council. It's open to any religion or none. And this is what this is about, as far as I'm concerned, that what we actually are saying is we've got the best of two worlds here, where we actually say we will continue with the prayers in this chamber. And if this council became all Hindu or all Jewish um in in the future, then they will have to come to a decision, hey, they can accommodate the Christians. Um, I'm pleased to uh to support this amendment and I will be doing that exactly. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Fergood. Councillor Cook.
Uh, thank you, Mr Mayor. Uh, just one clarification for councillor Fergood, uh, and he's someone to be cooked. Um, when I moved the amendments, basically, um, what I did state was the constitution does not state when the meeting starts, but it does state when the week meeting will start. We actually need a change of the constitution to that bit. That's why I've not done that tonight because that is actually needs to follow a different process. So just to clarify, I I understand the comments that have been made, obviously about sticking with our traditions. I'll just put this out there one more time for this chamber, please, Mr Mayor. When our traditions take away my rights, the tradition is wrong. Thank you.
Uh, we'll go to the vote now.
All right.
To, yeah, to the vote now on the amendments. Those four? Those against? The amendment is carried. Thank you. We now move to substantive um amendments. Um.
Motion.
No, motion. Yeah, let's do apologize. Before that happens, sorry councillor.
Um, thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to exercise my right to speak to the substantive motion. I haven't spoken to you yet.
Yes, okay.
Uh, Mr Mayor, thank you. Um, I do again urge colleagues to vote against this uh set of recommendations. It is clear to me that this matter with respect to the working group has been ill thought out as to the implications and it is an important topic that in my view deserves more thorough time effort spent upon it before coming to council. Can I highlight one or two of the incongruities that have arisen? Uh, more than one member has suggested that it would be appropriate to invite people of various faiths and or denominations if they so wish to lead prayers. That is likely to be an impossibility. Uh, where will it be before we get to the end of the list? And I know certain people within my extended family do not share my view, which is that of a non-believer, but they do share a religious view. Why should they have to wait for years before they get an invitation to reflect or at the invitation of the mayor to pause for thought? That seems to me to be an impossibility. I don't like also, Mr Mayor, the idea that we put back the opening of the council meeting, ten minutes. Why not simply bring forward to ten to six what people want if they want it in terms of a moment of reflection, prayers, et cetera? And then I for one can turn up at six o'clock, walk straight into the council meeting and do that that I'm elected to do, which is to get on with the business of the council. Why do we suggest off on the hoof that we start at ten past six and the leader of the council says that the chief executive comm- uh officer will be happy with that? That indicates to me that he's been consulted beforehand. Why couldn't I be consulted beforehand or at least given the information beforehand so that I can contribute towards the debate and that we can all contribute towards the debate without the possibility of actually deciding something which is really important on a set of principles, well-meaning as they are? And they are well-meaning. But in my view, this is opening a can of worms. And again, I don't see why um I should be in the situation. And I respect what my colleague councillor Sherry People says about my past life in connection with her own past life. Yes, we do have a habit of of asking for that little bit of extra information. And I'm the first to admit that I don't know everything and that I I learn every day. And sometimes I learn every day and it surprises me what I don't know. So I again urge colleagues, please vote against this substantive motion. That will maintain the status quo. And then if those who think that that matters need changing can then get a set of ideas together which deal with all the ramifications that are involved in this very important topic and come back to council so that we can have a meaningful vote, so that all of us have the opportunity of understanding what the issues are before the evening and are able to think about our contribution that we we may well want to make or may well not want to make. So colleagues, I please urge you to vote against these set of recommendations. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sherry. Uh, I would like to make a statement that um prior to this meeting, um, I felt very uncomfortable with the proposals that were then put forward. Um, having listened to the arguments um that have been put put by various uh sides of the chamber, um, I feel that compromise um is possible and also that regarding the positioning of the uh prayers, um, in my opinion, my humble opinion uh and private opinion, um, would actually um allow me to feel a lot easier with what is um happening tonight. But um, having said that, over to Jeremy, uh, I'm going to sum up the um.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you for making that statement. Um, Mr Mayor, it's been an interesting week uh for me. Uh, last week, um, somebody called me well-respected and somebody else called me honourable. Uh, I argued it's probably a vicious rumour. Um, thi- this week, uh, I've received emails from the public telling me that we shouldn't be discussing this as it's not important, to which my response is, if it's not important, why have you taken the time to email me about it? There's no one's ever emailed me about a council matter since I I left the positions leader. Uh, and it's that unimportant. It is now eighteen minutes past seven and the majority of the room have had a good go at this. Um, I've also been told I'm I'm going to hell for proposing it. Um. No, that wasn't a motion. Uh, Mr Mayor, I've been put in uh in an odd position in being chair of corporate scrutiny and being on the working group. Uh, but I, you know, discussed it in the working group, come to a position, discussed it in the uh committee, come to a position. Uh, and then through the challenges of the last week, as in people challenging that position, not, you know, anything else, um, I've actually had to spend quite a bit of time reflecting on what we're doing this evening. Uh, and something that shocked a number of people in the working group uh was when I I said I'm actually quite religious and a Christian. And these people I've worked with for over fifteen years had no idea. And it's not because I denied my faith, it's because I hadn't shouted about it. So we had a group meeting last night and there was a good discussion, as you would imagine. Uh, and I went home thinking, are we doing the right thing? And having a Christian upbringing and being involved in in the church, uh, I thought, you know what? I've not actually looked at my religion here. So I got out my little red book, no, not that one, this little red book, which is a Gideon's Bible that was given to me in nineteen eighty nine when I was confirmed into the Methodist Church. I would flick through that and spend some time reflecting. Uh, the reason this is relevant, Mr Mayor, is because a number of times this evening we've had the the comment and the discussion that this is part of our tradition, that we should stand and pray because we are a Christian nation and it's part of our tradition. Interestingly, the Book of Matthew, I'm not going to quote too many passages, the Book of Matthew refers to prayer, and when you pray, do not be like the hypocrites, for they love to pray standing on street corners to be seen by others. Truly, I tell you, they have received their reward in full. It then goes on to suggest that prayer should be a private matter for the individual. There's obviously more to that that text. But that did make me think. And in reflection of the people that have raised it tonight, we stand through tradition. Are we standing up just to be seen to be standing up, just to be seen to be part of a Christian nation? Or are we standing up because we believe in prayer? And for those Christians amongst us, the ones who believe in prayer will be the ones that are rewarded, which is actually that how that goes on to say. So, Mr Mayor, for those that say it's tradition, I think that's a really weak argument based on what I've looked at in the last twelve hours, fourteen hours. We should be doing this for the right reasons. Prayer should be for the right reasons. My relationship with, and I'll say it again, my relationship with my God is a private personal matter. The last time I said that, I was accused of privatising God.
Quite rightly, isn't it?
And there are a number of people in this room who've spoke to me in recent weeks who've said the exact same thing. They are religious, but no one else in the room knew because their relationship with their God is that private relationship. And we should be, we should enable people to exercise that right while also respecting those who don't want to be standing there just to be counted. So, Mr Mayor, I think it it is a way forward. I was undecided last night because I was told I was going to hell. Uh, but having looked at scripture, and I've got a number of other passages which I won't share, um, I do believe it is the right thing to do to allow a mechanism to take place. And I'm happy with the amendment. Um, just one quick one, Mr Mayor. Uh, it's been said a number of times tonight about different preachers and different clerics or whatever. We're not discussing that tonight. We're discussing when the prayer takes place. And under the current practice, not under the constitution, under the current practice, prayers take place after the six P M, which is when the summons for the meeting identifies the start of the meeting. And that's the crux, the crux of the matter. In terms of other religions, and somebody said, it won't be long before we have a Jew or a Muslim on the council. Historically, we've had Muslims on this council. In fact, some people probably here at the same time as uh as as he was. We've had Muslims on the council. We have very recently had a member of the council who never attended a civic service, as in never went into the church because their faith did not allow them to effectively. But they were there at the start and they were there at the end. And no one else noticed they hadn't been in the church or not. We need to allow people that right to do so, Mr Mayor. And that's why I'm going to support the amended motion this evening. And I'd like to thank everybody for the input they've put in. It's uh, it's unusual for us to have such a debate uh and to be at twenty five past seven, I think is a is a testament to the passions of the people in the room and what is actually a fundamental issue in terms of our society.
Thank you, uh, thank you councillor Oates. Sorry about that. Uh, right, um, we now come to the vote on a substantive um uh motion. All those in favour? And those against? The motion's carried. Thank you. Right, item six, um, we have Against Hate Campaign and Endorsement of Amnesty International's Definition, pages twenty seven to thirty. Um, and to receive the recommendation from the Chair of Corporate Scrutiny Committee to endorse the Cabinet's decision regarding Amnesty International's Against Hate Campaign. And I think, yeah, councillor Doyle.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. First, I'd like to thank the officers who originally compiled this report, Karen Adley and Joe Sun. The purpose of the report is to raise awareness and inform members of Amnesty International's UK's campaign uh Against Hate Campaign. Also to seek council endorsement of Amnesty International's UK campaign and the adoption of Amnesty International motion to condemn racism, xenophobia and hate crimes. The recommendations are as follows, that the council endorses the Amnesty International UK motion. We are proud to live in a diverse and tolerant society. Racism, xenophobia and hate crimes have no place in this country. Our council condemns racism, xenophobia and hate crimes unequivocally. We will not allow hate to become acceptable. We will work to ensure that local bodies and programmes have the support and resources they need to fight and prevent racism and xenophobia. And we reassure all people living in this area that they are valued members of the community. The Against Hate Campaign was launched in response to the reported rise in hate crimes following the EU referendum. This has been further underpinned by the introduction of other policies such as the Anti-Social Behavior Crime and Policing Act information, uh report, looking at the use of CPNs uh for antisocial behaviour, amongst other offences, and also the adoption of the corporate antisocial behaviour policy in conjunction with our partners. Tamworth Borough Council encourages all incidences to be reported to the police, either uh via one O one or nine 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 uh for emergency situations or reported online. As the Am- Amnesty International UK's recommended motion is aligned to everything that the council promotes through our policies, procedures and behaviours, as I mentioned, members of the council are requested to endorse the motion to publicly condemn such acts. Under the council's own policies, the council is committed to working to make Tamworth a place free from discrimination. An update report on the council's equality policies and progress is also made uh available, where members will find information on the actions taken. In summary, since June two thousand and sixteen, Amnesty International UK supporters have been writing to their local councils asking them to pass a council motion to condemn racism, xenophobia and hate crimes and to work to ensure local bodies and programmes have support and resources to fight and prevent racism and xenophobia. The leader of the council was approached by Amnesty International for Tamworth Borough Council to pass the council motion to condemn such acts. Whilst there is no indication that there is any particular problem in Tamworth, the council feels it important to sign up to this proposal. Many other councils have also done likewise. Tamworth Borough Council, through their Community Safety Partnership, has engaged in communities against crime of hate to support victims of hate crimes and to educate and challenge unacceptable behaviours with Tamworth, within Tamworth. So, again, I move the recommendations, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Doyle, councillor people.
Thank you, Mr, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I'm conscious of councillor Bill Cliss eyes on the back of my back, but I don't really care. Um because he called me a jack-in-the-box, it's his discredit. Um I want to endorse the and second this motion uh because it has the full uh and complete support of those who were, all of us who were at our group meeting last night. Um but also because of various other factors. But I would therefore ask that as this motion is so important in terms of the statement of public uh opinion, not only am I seconding it, but I'm also asking for it to be a named vote. And I would ask for the endorsement of councils to support that proposal. I have, I have the requisite five and all, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I just, having demonstrated I have support for a named vote, can I um also um make clear that I have a very personal commitment to supporting councillor Doyle's proposal tonight, two in fact. The first, which I mentioned when I spoke with councillor Cook and others at the anti-E D L rally, was that when I was thirteen, I lost my friend Abraham. Abraham was a young um Ugandan Asian, came over to, no, yeah, uh came over um probably at about the age of nine, ten, it was the time when Idi Amin kicked him all out. And he happened to be a Catholic, he used to come to church with me and serve mass, as councillor Standins explained, uh he still does. Um and one Sunday I got there and I said, where's Abraham? And they said, he's dead. Because somebody didn't like foreigners and threw a brick at him. And that brick took away his young life. So a few years later, when I was in the town centre and I saw somebody having a go at a foreign person, or apparently foreign person, probably not, but you know, I told him to get lost because I had to, because that was what Abraham's memory meant. But in this, there is another bit of it. There's a bit about picking on people. We'll all remember, remember when the crowd in Portsmouth got confused between a paediatrician and a paedophile? Evening. On the day, and I know you suffered here with the Birmingham pub bombing, but I grew up just outside Guildford. And the Guildford pub bombing took place, in fact, I'd walked past it, I'd only an hour earlier because there was a second hand bolt shop and I used to go there on the train. Um and so, you know, I knew exactly where it had happened. Following morning, our neighbours were outside our house in a line chanting at us, Paddy's Go Home. Now, that's what we got, hate crimes. I could not but endorse this, not because I want to jump up and, you know, support the Tories, anybody in particular, but because I understand in a minor way what it is like. I don't stand out from the crowd, I would fully recognise it's different when you cannot be apparently part of the rest. But some of those people never spoke to my mother again for twenty-five years because they were too embarrassed afterwards when they realised what they had done. But to have people outside your house chanting at you because of their ignorance is something which I would not wish on anyone. Our society in Tamworth is changing. Our um society is changing. I've noticed if you pop down to Tesco's, there's more and more non-white faces. That's fine. But that's why it's the right time to publicly state that this council does not ha- have any tolerance for that kind of behaviour or that kind of attitude. And that's why I wanted it to be a public statement, Mr. Mayor. And if councillors will support that and support this motion, then it'll be a pleasant thing to think that Abraham taught me something and I was much, much younger than this to value everybody for who they are, not for what they look like or what skin they have or what religions we've discussed or whether they have none. So I ask, Mr. Mayor, that we support this motion for those reasons.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor people. Councillor Chris Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um for me, this is actually um it's important, um it's emotional. But also, I have to ask. Um. So as all of us are aware, I've got a stutter, I've had it. Sometimes I was a child, man. Um kind of growing up, school, hell, absolute hell. But so I've grown, came a day where I just heard everything go over and over. So I thought, took myself. More actually letting this um slip at me. And uh from that uh day on, I've always um a troid. Um uh commit the uh life which I've had, which I've got. Um enjoyable, uh. Probably laugh on that. So, cheer around. Nowadays, I can phone a taxi and I'll uh hang up on me. Uh. Do you want to let it slip at me? No. So, because I agree, um with this, what I want to point out is, yes, the council can adopt it. It will show everyone that we're adopting it. And we weren't uh done for it. Though I want a picture though, social media, Facebook, websites, um. Where's it done as well? There are some out there that then generally call that a total person. And even if we adopted it, will not change any of them kind of things. Unless it's all of us um can get together and actually work out our side action on it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Councillor Faulkner.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. We are having a very uh moral um evening tonight and perhaps quite refreshing. Uh I'm sure that it will be a model for everything that we do in the future, but nevertheless. Uh I very much welcome this, uh because we, I think we are living in a more dangerous world. We're living in a world where perhaps the rights of each individual human being, uh wherever they live in the world, essentially are, are under threat. We're living in a world where identity politics uh tends to be raising its head. I don't subscribe to a thing about politics. As far as I am concerned, each and every human being, regardless of where they live in the world, is entitled to the protection of the uh Universal Declaration of Human Rights. And I think, I'm very glad to see this um motion here tonight because I think it's aligned in the sand. I was frightened that we might just all vote for it. It would just be stuck on a shelf somewhere to gather dust and ultimately um perhaps forgotten about. I hope that is not the case. Amnesty International um has a long record going back to nineteen sixty-one, when it was actually founded in the United Kingdom. It was founded in the United Kingdom um by somebody who uh was made aware of reports of two um people in Portugal, which was then a dictatorship. And they were sentenced allegedly to seven years in jail for toasting liberty. Portugal, I'm glad to say, is no longer a dictatorship. But particularly with the actions of Vladimir Putin, supporting every extreme right-wing movement that seems to be going and the actions that we are witnessing in Syria, which has caused major disruption and breaches of civil rights. Um I think it is appropriate that we do put down that marker. And therefore I would urge us all, particularly when we have the named vote, to support this because I think what we're talking about here is extremely important, not only for human rights, but for the sort of democracy that I believe in.
Thank you, councillor Faulkner. Councillor Standen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um I had a question at the very start, I think councillor Doyle's actually answered it, which is the recommendation actually is printed cabinet. You said um council, so I'm presumably moving, no, I was just moving to council. Thank you. Um before I go on to the questions I was going to raise, I suppose I'll say how impressed I've been by councillor Cook with dealing with his disability. My uncle suffers with, with um speech impediment as well. And I've got to take my hat off to you at times. I'm also for this council and the patience it shows at times. You never feel out of place, but you constantly think, we will sit here for as long as you need us to and you'll carry on and, you know, well done. Um the comments in the report regarding uh some of the issues that rose after the EU referendum in um June two thousand and sixteen. I have a cousin that we, uh who moved from Ireland with, with her son, who was abused verbally after that with the Paddy's Go Home. Just reminded me is that when I was a teenage lad, living in Ireland for a year, I got exactly the same thing for being English. Um I think most people, the moral majority, will be disgusted by either situation. Um I should bear in mind, my grandfather, his great-grandfather, personally named after going Irishman fought for this country in World War One. He was left maimed at the end, I'm just wondering how he would feel to the way that, you know, reaction to how his great-grandson was treated. Um I support this motion. To me, it, it's an obvious one, we, we should support. It ties in very nicely with the previous discussion. We, we, you know, it's basically saying, you know, we, we should be free to live, we shouldn't have any hate. We shouldn't really need to support this in one sense, as it should be obvious. But we need to send out a message, so I'll definitely vote for this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Standen. Councillor Bishop.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh we're very lucky in this country, I feel. Yes, there is all these kind of forms of hate crime. But luckily, we don't see a lot of them in Tamworth. And I know personally being the member of Glasgow, there's not a lot. Even people come and they don't even say things in passing to you about there being different people in Glasgow. They just accept everybody as they are. So I'm very proud to support this recommendation, not just for the people in Glasgow, not for Tamworth, but for England and across the whole world, that we are all saying, no, you should not behave this way and we will not tolerate it. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Bishop. Tom, councillor J.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um firstly, I didn't expect to be uh moved this evening. Um I want to thank councillor people for this story and councillor Cook as well. Um the fact that, you know, somebody was killed because they're not from here is um sickening and, you know, the fact that you've, you've still experienced prejudice to this day, because I understood it, that is absolutely wrong. Um some of you will know here that my wife is not from England, got a Brazilian wife. So I've got a daughter who's, which will sit in as well and a second one on the way. And uh, you know, I've seen firsthand when we're talking in another language in supermarkets to this day, people treat you differently, look at you differently, sometimes they'll say things to each other. Um and then when you turn around and speak to them in Tamworth accent, they, they back off. Um but it's wrong that that happens and I don't have a Tamworth accent, right? Um it's wrong that happens and uh it's sad, in fact, that we have to actually spell it out in a definition, um what's expected of each other. Um but I think it's the right thing to do. Uh I think it links into what we talked about earlier, being tolerant. Um, you know, treating each other as you want to be treated yourself, respecting each other. Um so I fully support it and I think it's a good message put out there to say, you know, gay, straight, black, white, British or other, doesn't matter, you're welcome in our great town, Tamworth, so I fully support it.
Thank you, councillor J. Um councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um obviously it would be no shock to this council um uh that we cannot support this motion. Um before you condemn me, let me say this, as a Christian, I condemn all three things that are. As a Christian, I condemn all three things that are in this motion. Let me say why I cannot vote for this motion and why I will not vote for this motion. We are being asked to support an Amnesty International motion to condemn racism, xenophobia and hate crimes unequivocally. Xenophobia is defined as an irrational fear of foreigners or of any, anything foreign. A term, in my opinion, which is used to silence people in the same way political correctness is used to silence people and silence debate. I wonder what the phobia is for someone who has an irrational fear of speaking on such matters. Tamworth Borough Council already has a statutory duty under the Equality Act of 2010 to do all of these things that they are asking us to make a motion on. It's supported by the council's diversity and equality scheme. The council is committed to working towards making Tamworth a place free from discrimination. This motion is therefore pontificating and pandering to Amnesty International, to an international statement, which is already addressed comprehensively by the law of this land and therefore enforced already by our police and our courts. I therefore see no reason for this motion, Mr Mayor. I shall be abstaining from it in the full knowledge that what is being asked of us by Amnesty International is already being done by this council unequivocally. Or, as the dictionary puts it, in a way that leaves no doubt. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Bill Cliffe. Councillor Shreebe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm disappointed but not surprised at the comments made by councillor Bill Cliffe. But I think he's missing the point completely. There are laws in this country that protect people and on the whole, they're very good laws. And when miscreants are found in court and brought to justice, they're dealt with. But that's not what this is about. This is about making a positive proactive statement about the way that we believe that citizens should behave. It's not about what's dealt with in the law, it's about our moral duties. It's a very, very simple motion, which boils down to respect everybody. When I was a little girl, my mum used to say to me, if you can't say something nice, say nothing. I think all of us have had that said to us at some point or another. Little boys and little girls have had it said to them at some point or another. And that's really what this motion is about. It's not just about saying, it's about doing. We should be promoting a positive tolerant society. We should be saying to the citizens of Tamworth, this is how we want you to behave. This is what we expect of you. You have rights as citizens, but you also have responsibilities. One of your responsibilities is to be tolerant, to respect everybody. And if you can't say anything nice, to keep your mouth shut. It's not just about saying things nice, it's about doing things nice. I've listened to several stories that really are very moving tonight. I think it's councillor J's story about people finding it strange that he's speaking in a foreign language. I can really relate to that because we've probably all been there. We've been in a supermarket, we hear people talking in a foreign language. But we've got a responsibility when we hear people talking in a foreign language to do something positive, which is to turn our heads on to, oh, they're talking in a foreign language. They must be from somewhere else. That's really interesting. Not, oh, talking in a foreign language, loving foreigners, shouldn't be here. And that's really what this motion is about. It's about encouraging people to promote the best standards of life, to promote the important values, to promote the things that make us responsible human beings. And I support this wholeheartedly. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor People. Councillor Jarriot.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I do stick my hand up to secondary, but I wasn't seen and councillor People got there first. Is that why I was put down here? However.
I'd be on the back bench soon.
However, following councillor People's speech, I'm really pleased that he had the opportunity to second the motion because that was, you know, a genuine personal reason to support this. And I think it's tragic, but it's fantastic that councillor People was able to share that with us this evening and some of the other stories. I just wanted to very briefly pick up on a point. Councillor Sandin raised that the recommendation refers to cabinet. This paper did go to cabinet and it's through corporate scrutiny that we picked it up. And the discussion of corporate scrutiny was that actually, this is a very important issue and should be picked up by full council. So cabinet has already acted in terms of implementing parts of this. And on the back of that, I'd like to really push the fact that it's here now because we are making a statement. We know the law of the land protects all of us from all sorts of different things. We know the law of the land also isn't applied in every case. We all know that not everything is reported. So whilst that law of the land exists, its actual delivery on the ground can often be missed. We are making a statement here that whilst we accept the law of the land exists, whilst we accept that that's sitting on a shelf waiting to be used, we're here to say, actually, in Tamworth, we will not tolerate that sort of behaviour. And whether that's as a local authority or as individuals representing the local authority or representing the communities in Tamworth, I believe we should all get behind this and make that statement that we will not tolerate inappropriate behaviour in the manner described in this report. I fully support it and this is why I pushed the scrutiny committee for it to come here. I do have to apologise, Mr Mayor. I do have to leave at 8pm.
Today.
Today. So I do apologise, Mr Mayor, but I will have to leave shortly.
Thank you, councillor. Thank you, councillor Moat. Councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Councillor, I've stolen my thunder slightly. He's absolutely correct. This was taken through cabinet when Amnesty International first contacted me. But I'm pleased that scrutiny have called it for all councils. It is an important issue and I'm pleased to see so many members embracing it. Not looking to get into a prolonged argument with councillor Bill Cliffe, but I would ask this. He says if it's already reinforced through other measures, why do we need to do it? I'd ask, what's the problem with reinforcing it and revoting for it? You say you agree with all three items. Well, vote for it then. What we honestly see is, I'll give you a further example. I'm sure in many of our council estates around Tamworth, those that have the larger council estates in our ward, you sometimes see those lovely signs in the middle. No ball games by other than the council. Usually signed by Colin Moore. They make great goalposts, don't they? Nobody enforces it. And it's only by reaffirming our belief in what we're talking about tonight, that we reaffirm this is our commitment. We ensure resources, whether it's police hours, council, go in that direction. Because we have reinforced as the controlling body of this council, this is what we believe in. That's why we should vote for it. When we talk of those things foreign and we mention the word xenophobia, does anybody else believe in the Irish, the fear of all things foreign and the words Greek? Always makes me laugh though. I'm a great believer, Mr Mayor, that God for sake, our Celtic, Roman, Anglo-Saxon Viking Norman blood ever became polluted. We are a Mongol race. The British are a Mongol race, especially the English. It's what we are. And what we're good at is embracing that. We embrace the difference, we embrace the change and we grow. That's what makes Britain great, our ability to accept what's different, embrace it, bring it into our own culture and grow as a society. Only by embracing the wording that's in front of us now can we continue down that line and grow better as a society. Therefore, I would support the motion, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Doyle, would you like to sum up? Would you wish to?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll keep this brief. I'd like to thank everybody for their positive, nearly everybody for their positive comments tonight. Thank you very much. I'd like to move the report.
Thank you, councillor Doyle. Okay, so we go to a named votes. Councillor Bill Cliffe. Councillor Bishop. Councillor Chesworth.
For the motion.
Councillor Rosie Claymore. Councillor Steve Claymore.
For.
Councillor Clements. Councillor Daniel Cook.
For.
Councillor Christian Cook. Councillor Doyle.
I was definitely for.
Councillor Faulkner.
For.
Councillor Ford.
For.
Councillor Gans.
For.
Councillor Goodall.
For.
Councillor Gretrix.
For.
Councillor James.
For.
Councillor Jay.
For.
Councillor Kingston.
For.
Councillor Norkey.
For.
Councillor Jeremy Oates.
For.
Councillor Nick Oates.
For.
Councillor Simon People.
For.
Councillor Shreebe People.
For.
Councillor Price.
For.
Councillor Pritchard.
For.
Councillor Rogers.
For.
Councillor Sandin.
For.
Councillor Summers.
For.
Councillor Michelle Fergens.
For.
Councillor Pinkstert. Okay, that motion is carried. Right, councillor Kingston.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm going to move a motion without notice, and that's because it's time moving on, that under procedure rule 4.13c, to change the order of the agenda so that item eight is now dealt with before item seven. So I'm looking for a second for that motion, please.
Seconded by councillor Bill Cliffe. All those for. All of those against. Motion carried. Right, item eight is. The annual report of the Treasury Management Service's actual credential indicators, 2017, 2018. And it's councillor Pritchard who's going to bring that to us.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I feel honoured, I think ever in history my time on the council has really brought one of my reports forward. There's a first time for everything. Clearly, the councils have learned from the way I deliver them, but nevertheless. The report is a statutory requirement which the council has to approve, including the credential indicator actuals and demonstrates favorable results for the Treasury Service. The authority has complied with the Professionals Code statutes guidance and there are no issues to report regarding non-compliance with the approved credential indicators. The council maintained an average investment balance externally invested of 61.3 million and achieved a return of 0.54%. The treasury management function has achieved an outturn investment income of £331,000 compared to a budgeted amount of £260,000 as a result of both investment balances and average interest rates being higher than budgeted. During the 1718 financial year, the council complied with its legislative requirements and regulatory requirements. And there were no overall increases in borrowing within the year and the authorised limit was not breached. On two occasions during the financial year, the approved counterparty limits with the annual investment strategy were exceeded. The first occurred on the 22nd of December 2017, when early payments of business rates resulted in £1.696 million being held within the Lloyds Bank account, which exceeded the approved limit of £1 million by £696,000 for a period over the weekend and the Christmas bank holiday. The second occurred on the 2nd of January 2018, when a repayment of £2 million investment resulted in £2.048 being held in the Lloyds Bank accounts, exceeding the approved limit by £1.048 million. And we assume in both cases it was the banks pushing through payments early or businesses pushing through payments early because of the limited periods. At the 31st of March 2018, the council's external debt was 63 million and its external investments totaled 60 million, including the credited books excluding impaired investments. During the 1718, the minimum reporting requirements were complied with, which included the annual treasury strategy in advance of the year at council in February, a mid-year minimum treasury update to council in December, and the annual review following the end of the year describing the actual compare to the strategy. And I'm happy to take any questions from members. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Pritchard. Any questions? Councillor Bill Cliffe.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I've just got one question. The report actually states there are strict government limits on the borrowing of this authority or any other authority. Can the deputy leader confirm that this set limit on borrowing includes any borrowing made by the newly formed trading company? Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Councillor Pritchard, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Now, the trading company is separate to Tamworth Borough Council's treasury function.
Thank you, councillor Sean. Any more questions? We move to debate. Does anybody wish to debate?
With your indulgence, just now move the recommendations.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'll second it and we move to the right.
So apologies for that. We now go to debate. No one? In that case?
May I move the motion now be put?
Okay. Right, all those for the motion. All those against. The motion's carried. Thank you. Yeah, we move now to question time. Under item one, questions related to rule number 10, there are no questions. On item two there, to answer questions from the members of council pursuant to the procedure rule number 11. The first question that we have under that rule is councillor Dr Simon People. Would, we'll ask the leader of the council, councillor Daniel Cook, the following question.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Would the council leader please update the council regarding the steps taken to develop a vision for the former Gungay precinct site since its acquisition by the council?
Thank you, councillor People. Councillor Cook.
Thank you again, Mr Mayor. Councillor People will of course recall the cross-party decision for approval to acquire the site granted on the 11th of April 2018. After a decade of failed attempts on the site by the owner to bring forward a proposal of massive aspirations of this town, it was time to step in and address the matter and bring forward a scheme that worked for Tamworth Town Centre, the town as a whole. and bring forward a scheme that worked for Tamworth Town Centre, the town as a whole, and as well at this council. We must all recall that it was noted in the report that this project would be several years in the future and as we have to get this right for our town. We need to masterplan correctly to future-proof the site in both the needs of the town centre, our residents, and ensure a payback to the taxpayer. The site was physically acquired on the 7th of June 2018 once legal diligence had been completed by all parties. At this point, an internal team was set up to consider actions needed and where we needed to start on the journey. I personally met with the chief executive and leader of the county council in June 2018 to discuss the wider footprint of the site if they were to put in the courts and the old youth centre. Let's say bigger bang for our buck, for want of a better term, if the county came in with us. This is proving positive and I have a follow-up meeting in late September 2018. I have personally spoke to the PCC, Matthew Ellis, about options for rolling the police station into the development and officers that currently progress in this conversation and it's looking very positive. We were then successful in July 2018 in obtaining an LGA support to provide 40 days of consultancy support to assist specifically with housing options for the site. We were then successful in obtaining a Greater Birmingham and Soho LEP grant to co-fund master planning and cost planning activity currently being specified prior to a future tender. This was achieved in August 2018 and I believe it was around £90,000. This was followed by preparation of a procurement brief slash cost and master planning commission using the Homes England panel to speed up the selection process. This was completed in August 2018. A meeting was pencilled in for officers to meet with NSCP to discuss aspirations for the site and future partnership opportunities. I believe this meeting took place yesterday, but unfortunately I've not had a briefing back on that bit. Outputs from master planning, cost and planning exercises will of course go through the commercial investment strategy route. Steering groups will be set up then onto cabinet for endorsement. This is likely to be early 2019 when we start to see more feedback, but there is no date set in so at present. As per the agreed protocol, before it arrives at cabinet, other group leaders will be briefed on progress and view slot before the report reaches cabinet and then on to full council potentially if it is required. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cook. supplementary, councillor People? Do you have one?
Sorry, I thought I'd... First of all, Mr Mayor, can I thank the leader for the very full statement? Giving these detailed answers does help to maintain confidence across the chamber. It was an agreed decision. We did feel at the time that there ought to be some joint working group. But if we continue to be kept informed, and I would like, then that will be less necessary. And I would ask the council leader when he believes there might be some element of public consultation, because certainly once the news broke, lots of people said to me, when we get to say anything, and I clearly understand you can't have public consultation before you've got an outline and you know who's in and who's out. But if he could give us some indication of that longer term, that would be useful. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor People. councillor Cook.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think councillor People raises a good point. The taxpayer has bought this land. It's owned by this council and obviously a decision will be made by this council, but we need to remember we serve the taxpayer and they deserve to be consulted. But I think he hit the nail on the head at the end. When we know what we're consulting on is when we'll do it. Can I nail the timeline to it at present? Possibly not. If I had to take a wild guess, and please don't hold me to this, I would say summer next year we will start to outline to the public some ideas and some options. But please don't hold me to that as we go through the process of aligning everything to what is possible, what is not, what land is available, what is not. Any other little quirks we just need to adjust in the steering group and obviously seeking yourself and Chris Cook's input at the right point. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Cook. Right, we move on to question two. Again, under procedure rule number 11, councillor People will ask the portfolio holder for assets and finance councillor Robert Pritchard the following question. Would you like to...
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Would the portfolio holder agree that whilst the general trends in UK retailing are not his responsibility, the reason council properties in Market Street stand empty adorned only with plastic window dressing is because they've not been maintained properly by this Conservative council during its 14 years in power?
Thank you, councillor People. councillor Pritchard.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. The opposition leader paints an unfair picture. The vacant council-owned properties on Market Street, the council has spent £169,000 in recent years on their upkeep and maintenance. This figure excludes further works that were carried out because of a fire which was paid for by insurance. In terms of the properties themselves, the former Peel Cafe at 1230 Market Street is available for letting, although the size, layout and location have put off potential tenants, not its condition. It's a very large property and many potential tenants are finding it too big for their needs. Previous tenants have often shared the property with other businesses because of its size. 28 Market Street, known formerly as Uniform Warehouse, has only recently become vacant and is currently a part of ongoing negotiations with a potential tenant. And I'm confident that it will be re-letting due course. 27A Market Street has been vacant and unfit to let since 2004. Under previous administrations, the shop had fallen into severe decline. The condition, size, age, construction and internal layout of these old properties is such that the level of investment required to bring them up to a usable standard will not show a return on the investment. If it is at all possible to bring them up and refurbish them in a way that would attract a modern retail market tenant. Whilst it's not a detailed figure, simple estimates have put the cost in millions, clearly providing no return to the taxpayer. The most recent work by the Borough Council was to keep one of the properties structurally safe and again is the example of the historic neglect that's led the properties to be in the condition they are today. Furthermore, it's unfair to say that members don't care about these properties either. In the past, members have had discussions with numerous local heritage groups about using these properties and neighbouring properties for heritage purposes. However, these discussions have never borne any fruit. We are in a situation because successive generations have failed to invest in these properties and have left us today with the problem we have. They're too expensive to renovate. If renovated, would provide a very limited use and appeal and the works would never return the public money required to be invested in them. So to answer the question, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Pritchard. supplementary, councillor People? Yeah, okay, councillor People.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. It's always good when the question gets answered. Thank you, councillor Pritchard, for giving me a detailed and carefully broken down response. And we have to remember that despite the attempt to put all the blame on those who handed over power in 14 years ago, the reality is that we listened to you, extolling the virtues of no council tax rise, of the way in which the council was maintaining everything brilliantly on less and less money from this government. The reality is that the shoe pinches at key points and it is therefore, my view, that if this is the state of these properties, then I would ask you whether you would come to corporate scrutiny for a discussion in private on the matter so that we can fully discuss the issues around investment strategy. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor People. Right, now we have a... Oh, sorry.
You've got to give him the chance to reply.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I mean, they're audible words from the Louvre opposition. I did call the figures that council holds on the investment in these properties and unfortunately there is records of no investment prior to 2004. So again, my point stands we are left in a situation where there has been historic under-investments in these properties and previous councillors, particularly those who are in positions of responsibility, should accept that they've let down this generation and left us with a problem we need to address now. So I'm more than happy to discuss anything with any members.
Thank you, councillor Pritchard. Question number three. Again, under procedure rule number 11, councillor James will ask the portfolio holder for culture and operational services councillor John Chesworth the question that he'll pose now.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Can the portfolio holder responsible for waste and recycling please confirm Tamworth Borough Council's policy for community groups and individuals carrying out litterpicks in the borough of Tamworth?
councillor Chesworth.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you for your question, councillor James. The council doesn't have a specific policy on this point. However, community groups can contact street scene officers through our contact centre who will always try to provide bags, the loan of litterpickers where practical, and the safe collection of filled bags to support this valued community activity. Further, our officers will also provide advice on safety for groups on safe litterpicking. The council actively supports the community in providing this valuable contribution to keeping our town clean. Thanks, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chesworth. councillor James, do you have a supplementary?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor Chesworth, for your reply. As we now live in a world of no win, no fee, where there's a blame, there's a claim, are the Borough Council liable for any injuries incurred by uninsured individuals carrying out litterpicks on Borough Council land such as Wigginton Park? Thank you, Mr... Thank you.
Thank you, councillor James. councillor Chesworth, would you like to respond?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, councillor James. councillor James has just said no blame, no claim. I've got my own understanding of the position. However, given it's a legal question, I'm going to get legal confirmation and communicate and answer it later this week.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Chesworth. Question four. Again, under procedure rule number 11, councillor Sherry People will ask the portfolio holder for housing councillor Michelle Thurgood the question. Which is?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Please can the portfolio holder update the council on the progress made on the implementation of the Homelessness Reduction Act 2017?
Thank you, councillor People. councillor Thurgood.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I thank councillor People for the opportunity to reiterate to members the many things that Tamworth Borough Council has done before and since the Homelessness Reduction Act came into force. The HRA 2017, not to be confused with the other HRA, is one of the biggest challenges to the rights of homeless people in England for 15 years or so. It effectively bolts two new duties to the original statutory rehousing duty, so effectively to duty to prevent homelessness, but also duty to relieve homelessness. In Tamworth, we were well prepared for the legislation prior to its commencement. And as members will be aware, this has been subject to a range of stakeholder briefings, including a member seminar earlier this year. We have successfully restructured and realigned staffing resources to meet the potential challenges that this would bring. And this will remain a key focus of the new Assistant Director of Neighborhoods in her new role. All housing staff received external training for three days on the act. There is a continual commitment to ensure our teams are fully versed on the demands and we continuously benchmark to take learnings from others. Where relevant, further training will be provided to the teams as well as specific needs for individual officers as well. We have updated our IT provision, including tendering for new software or new software to enable us to manage claims more accurately. And we've also updated our website to make sure that we're open and transparent as possible over what's available for members or people that may need the service. This includes specific content for vulnerable people and all of the changes that have been made are compliant with Ministry of Housing, Communities and Local Government guidelines. We've also increased the amount of partnership working, etc. We are aware that many of the areas of early support and intervention are done by others, not us. So we've met with all local prisons and also working with probation and mental health charities and providers and also with people such as discharge nurses at Good Hope Hospital and also GPs within Tamworth also. And finally, on actions to date, we have continued the Housing Solutions Fund alongside the duty to prevent, which has basically allowed us to continuing the work of preventing homelessness and also where possible to get people into six and 12 months' tenancies in the private rent sector in affordable accommodation when that's relevant for those individuals and appropriate for those individuals. And of course, this work doesn't stop and will be further enhanced with the upcoming HRA, so the housing revenue accounts, which will be going to cabinet in September, and also the housing allocations policy, which will be out to consultation as soon as members are being briefed, which will be happening shortly. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thurgood. councillor People, would you like to...
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that answer, councillor Thurgood. Very specifically, I know a lot of people this evening were taking off their jackets because they were so warm. I've personally been quite cold all day and I'm conscious that the colder weather is coming in and it will soon be time for the winter night shelter. And I'm just wondering what in the context of the winter night shelter council has been able to do with regard to prevention of homelessness. I understand that there is some money allocated for a support worker, but I would have liked to have seen a little bit more proactive involvement and I wondered if there has been some behind the scenes that I'm not aware of.
Thank you, councillor People. councillor Thurgood.
So in terms of the specifics of the night shelter, I more than have to kind of pick up on exactly where we are today because I didn't look at that as part of this answer. And however, as members will be aware and councillor People will be aware, at the last budget setting process, we did make a commitment to continue to fund the support work. We recognise the work that the night shelter did last year, it was an incredible success, partly from a council and church group and also the volunteers that did it as well. So we are committed to supporting it as long as those volunteers and those church groups are prepared to kind of do so this winter and also next winter. But in terms of the specifics, I hate that word. I will pick up on that and get that to you at some point this week, if that's okay. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Thurgood. Right, we move on to another question. Question five. Under the procedure rule number 11 again, councillor Sherry People will ask the portfolio holder for housing councillor Michelle Thurgood the following question. Would you like to read this out?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Might just about get it in before we have to vacate the premises. Would the portfolio holder update the council regarding projected collection rates for council house rents over the remainder of the current MTFS period and the overall impact this will have on the HRA 30-year business plan?
Thank you, councillor People. councillor Pritchard.
Okay, thank you, Mr Mayor, and thank you, councillor People, for her question. The performance on the collection of council tenants' income, including rent arrears, remains top quartile when benchmarked with other authorities. The Housing Policy Network re-accredited the Landlord Services team in May 2018, endorsing Tamworth's progress on its action plan and continued performance and aims at minimising rent loss to the council, especially since the reintroduction of universal credit. Specifically, on the HRA business plan, we have obviously forecast bad debt and this is built into the overall budget setting process. From the summary figures, which I've got, and Jodie's got a copy of to pass to you, so you've got them, that's brilliant. That makes life a little bit easier. You will be able to see that the actual amount of bad debt provision in the budget is actually higher than what we're actually experiencing today. So we are collecting more than we budget for, which is good. But specifically, we're less than 1% of the rent budget that is considered to be bad debt. So it's still colossal figures when you look across the MTFS, but actually when you look, it's less than 1%. So it just shows how good and how well our residents are actually paying their rents, which is obviously, as I hear in the Daily Mail about saying, pay your rent before kind of paying for your Christmas presents. Completely reiterate that again. At the moment, it's really important for residents and tenants to be able to pay their rent and to do so. In terms of the business plan, that's going to go to cabinet in September, so I'll happily talk to your opposition groups as well to run through exactly what that means for the business plan. So that obviously takes the next 30 years or so. But one specific point I did just want to raise is that obviously it does include the impacts that we're still experiencing on the government's 1% reduction till 2020 on housing rents. And so whilst that's reduced the overall financial capacity in the forthcoming plan, it does give us the opportunity to provide more affordable rent. it does give us the opportunity to provide more affordable rents. And also, the investment profile does ensure that we will continue to meet decent home standards and, most importantly, of all, making sure that we continue and are able to deliver projects such as Think of Green and The Carrier, which is, I know, members are following intently as the building work goes on. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thurgood. Councillor People, would you like a supplementary?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr Mayor. I have the benefit of the figures in front of me, which obviously other members don't have. I noticed that the provision for bad debts is forecast to rise by thirteen point one five, thirteen point one one, thirteen point one, thirteen point one over the next four years. I think what I understood you to say was that you're not anticipating that that increase will actually occur. So I just really wanted clarification on that. I think we made it quite plain some months ago, the concern, I think, was felt across the chamber, that the introduction of universal credit might actually result in a greater level of indebtedness and difficulties for tenants paying their rent. So just reassurance, is it what you're saying that the universal credit isn't having the impact that we thought it might?
Thank you, councillor People. Councillor Thurgood, your last response.
So there has been a small increase in the number of tenants that are in debt. That doesn't necessarily always mean it's to do with universal credit. It could be other changes or circumstances. When you map it out, it just have kind of a bit of a wave effect, so it goes up and down. But in terms of the thirteen percent, it's obviously, we can have that as a standard. I believe it's a standard figure that we basically budget for each year. Obviously, rental prices, rents received go up in terms of value, so we can do that as a source across in terms of uplift. But if you look at consistently from twenty thirteen, twenty eighteen, which is the bottom box, the provision of bad debt by year has been as high as naught point nine four percent, down to as low as naught point seven eight percent across that five-year period. So it hasn't gone up and down as much as you may expect it. So it's that wave effect again, but we haven't seen to two, three, four percent. That might change, but we're not anticipating it at this particular point in time.
Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Thurgood. Right, we hit the end of the meeting, and I would like to thank all members for their contributions. And I'm sure that our first televised or propelled meeting has been a success. Thank you all for coming. Thank you. Thanks, members of the public.
Councillors, ladies and gentlemen, please be upstanding for the words of the mayor of Tamworth.